For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time to extend an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission of justice where I am not listed. And is there anyone in the audience that would like to add an item to the agenda? We have no response to that. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, we would add, in addition to, we have the executive session at the end of the agenda, in addition to personnel, we'd also like to add 125 to 3 consulting legal counsel.
Any other changes to the agenda? All in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, and approval of the human services report. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Anybody want to add to or remove from the consent agenda? We'll have a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consent agenda's passed. Moving on to claims, would we have a motion?
Second.
Any comments on claims? No discussion?
Yeah, real quick on the, there was a travel request from the sheriff there, and there were thirty meals or twenty-five meals in a couple of them, what, what is...
Which one are you talking about?
Well, there's two of them you have for travel requests.
And one is, one is for the officer that's in training for the drug fund right now.
Okay, and so, there will be, he has to go there...
He's at Sioux Falls.
He's at Sioux Falls, every, he has to go there every day?
Yeah, for six weeks.
For six weeks, and so that's what the meals are, and stuff like that? Okay, same way with the other person's in training?
The other one's going to the academy, that's my newest officer, he's going to the training academy here.
Okay.
So then he has to, just, it won't be a lot, but most of that's going to be gas and stuff going on.
Okay. Yeah, okay, I was just, it said one person, but it almost looked like there was multiple people going to one thing.
Yeah, no, it's just, one's going to Sioux Falls daily for the service dog.
Yeah.
And then the other one's going to the academy for thirteen weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on claims? Roll call vote.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to department head reports, Bev, would you like to be first?
Good morning.
Morning.
Business is pretty much as usual in, in my office. We've been busy lately with vital records, especially birth certificates and marriage certificates. The state has required that people prove their dependents for state insurance, and so, we've been selling a lot of vital records that way. But, I have one special thing that I came to talk to you about. My administrative assistant submitted her resignation last week, and it was too late to get on the agenda for today, to put the request in. So I was wondering if, well, her last day will be the twenty-third of November, that is the Friday after Thanksgiving, and I would like to start the process to fill the position before, I would like permission to advertise and that type of thing before the next commission meeting. I do have the, the request to fill all, the paperwork all filled out already, it just wasn't able to get on the agenda for today.
And this position is part of the pay plan, and as an elected official, you know, you guys, you approve the pay plan and the positions beginning of the year, so really the request from her is a formality, but we weren't able to get it on the agenda, so what we'd like to do is start that advertising process today, and then, we will still bring the paperwork forward on November twentieth, but it would help to get the advertising piece started right away, since she is done on November twenty-third.
Is, is that our new employee, or...
No, this is, Bev has not had a new employee in the register of deeds office for quite some, but she's the newest, is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, yes, she's been here about a year and a half or so.
Any objection?
No, no objection.
Is there any changes, I mean, as far as the job description, anything that...
No, I went over the job description that we had posted when, when she was hired, and it's, it's the very same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
I guess, real quickly, we did have a military and veterans affairs meeting yesterday at noon in the building, actually had a pretty good turnout, it's with the Commerce, we had about fourteen people there, so it was a pretty good group. I did talk with the Welfare Board, and I did do, I did go ahead and volunteer to be one of the trainers, I will be the central, or northeast corner trainer. Right now, we're down, we're still down one trainer for the northeast, but most of the training I'll probably be giving will be more into the Redfield area, possibly here on, a little farther, because that's the district that I took over. I will be setting up for the military, the military speaker that'll be coming up on campus tomorrow evening at seven o'clock, so I will be up on campus setting up a display of military things that, that were, that we borrowed from the DAV, and it's part of their English Department ongoing series and stuff, that's at the Art Museum. Also, up at the Veterans Resource Center on campus, at eleven o'clock on Friday, they're going to have a Purple Heart ceremony, and present Purple Hearts to a couple of people that had received those, and currently, there's one lady in South Dakota, or I shouldn't say lady, one woman in South Dakota that has received the Purple Heart, and she will be at the ceremony. And in closing, I did talk with Ram Enterprises, the ones that does our housing board, and I said, "Well, you know, I think it would be nice if we could have someone come in and just kind of go through and stuff." The article that was written, he did explain to me, the article that was written was actually actions that took place prior to them taking on the payroll. They'd only done two payrolls, and the action that they were talking about in, in that article in the Brown County paper, Aberdeen paper, were things that had happened before, and that's part of the reason that they did hire Ram to take over. He was a little disappointed at the, you know, the person didn't talk to him prior to the article being published. But, I have invited them to come up, and what I'll probably do is talk with Stacy and find out, you know, if there's a certain time that your agenda isn't quite as, you don't have quite as full a plate, and maybe have Rich come in and just kind of explain a little bit. Then I'll probably follow up with Mary, who is on the, oh, I should have wrote that down, it's a self-help program, the one where part of your rent goes into a fund, so that you're able to either purchase like a habitat house, or get your own place. But those will be two things that I will look at putting on the agenda later on.
That's family self-sufficiency.
Thank you, there it is, yes. I know what it does, I just can't remember the name offhand.
I'd just like to say, and I don't know if you are done, if not, I apologize for interrupting, I just attended my last meeting for that board, the chair goes to four meetings a year, and that was the last one I'll be at, and I assume Commissioner Bartley as vice chair will be chair next year, and he'll attend those, and I, I think it's great that if they're looking at coming up and talking to us, and I think there needs to be a hard look at how some of the activities are conducted. I have some concerns about internal controls on the budget stuff that I asked questions about and didn't get answers, and I, if they come to talk to us, it'd be very nice if they could talk about their internal controls, because we as the county are responsible for making sure that that, millions of dollars are properly spent, and, and as our representative on the board and our liaison, I, I just think that's an important question, and I will have questions when they come. The problem that, that they had this year with the vouchering, where we are losing funding because we didn't get vouchers?
That was, yeah, what, what happened is the feds had shut off...
Exactly.
The feds would not let us issue any more vouchers, and then, without us issuing vouchers, then they came back and they restored the funding, and now we're sitting, we went from thirty thousand in the hole to forty thousand, too much, and so we're, they're scrambling. With the process, you know, and I'm not going to go into it right now, but with the process that you, you interview the person, you give them the voucher, they find a place to live, you talk to the landlord, you have to have the inspection, so the house passes the inspection, and it, it just takes six to eight weeks.
So, now that they've got money that they have to spend before the end of the year, going to lose funding for next year, and I understand they're soliciting people, I've had two families that have reached out to me and said, "We're not being considered, why is that, why aren't they on the list?" I just would like to have a better explanation of the process.
There is still a waiting list.
Yeah, and whether that process is set up by Ram, or if that process is set up by the feds, but when they come and talk to us, they can just maybe explain some of that.
This isn't a new problem, this has been ongoing, this system is a very broken system, and it has been for a long, long time, and it goes much further than the local level, it's, it's up at the federal level, and so, you know, what, what we can do at this level is, I mean, it's pretty difficult, we can't fix this.
And, and I am, and I'm, just have not had a chance to get back to you all, I think we need to revise our resolution or ordinance, I can't remember which one it is, that relates to what we're doing with Ram because of some liability issues, and hopefully, I'm going to have something to you before the end of the year, but, or else Commissioner Bartley will finish that up next year. Thank you. Anything else, Mike?
I know.
Richard? Yes, oh. We're going to do community development next, thanks. Yep.
Good mu, good morning, sorry, Deck, didn't mean to butt, butt ahead either. You got Mr. Hill's report, I'm not, won't go into that. Yesterday, we did receive our building code effective grading schedule survey result back, and we're going to appeal that decision when Bob gets back here next week, to see what we need to do for that. I did give a presentation at SDSU on October nineteenth to the equine unit on what they would have to do to set up a stable in the county or in the joint area for their class to do the projects on. We were invited down to Decard Rural, Rural Action for a seminar, and I believe in Mitchell on November thirtieth. Today, there was a tabletop exercise at a Von Grid for the Buffalo Ridge Two facility up in the northeast part of the counties, and I will try to get up there to that, and we have bylaws updates going to the planning commission, they'll get those tonight, and they'll vote on those in December, so, providing everything's, meets the state's attorney's review on that, so, and that's all that I have.
Questions? Thank you. Kristen? Misty, we'll come back to you in a minute.
Good morning, I will be quick and brief, just a quick update as things kind of coming up in January, we were selected as the spot for the State National Archery and Schools Program 3D Tournament, that'll be in March, they're going to do it on a Friday this year, so that'll be alumni, so, college age as well as everyone at the high school level, middle school level as well, so we're preparing for about a hundred shooters statewide to come in and do a state 3D tournament here. We've worked with the National Guard, and they are going to do their, instead of Rapid City, they're going to do their State Twenty-Two Tournament at our location as well, that'll be the first weekend in January, so we're expecting about a hundred and fifty shooters to compete statewide in a Twenty-Two Tournament. Outdoor Women of South Dakota are also bringing their January event to our location, so about ninety women will be competing in a tournament there, and then they've decided to end with archery tag, they found that just extremely entertaining. I've also been asked to attend the State National Archery and Schools Program Training, so I would be the only one trained to actually train National Archery and Schools Program school teachers on this side of the state, so that's still something that I'm discussing, it's in Rapid City, and it's in January, and we all know how travel across the state in January would be, so that discussion happened on Monday. One other thing, our fire system is finally being connected to our existing alarm system, that's something that has never happened in that facility, so the fire system right now kind of doesn't go anywhere, and so now it'll be connected to our existing system. Lastly, we are holding a pumpkin chucking event at our facility on November eighteenth, we have about fifty pumpkins at our facility, and so, of course, I have all of these out of the box ideas, and so we have invited SDSU as well as the schools to build devices that will chuck pumpkins. Working with the city of Brookings, we are going to be able to chuck them into the parking lot, I've worked with our safety benefits coordinator, and we'll be able to do this in a safe manner, so people will be able to watch them splat, and then, of course, we'll be cleaning them up. So we're going to combine that with an open day at the, at the ranges, so ranges will be free for everyone to be able to use, we're going to do a couple other fall activities, so cornhole, and then I've set up pumpkin bowling, that will be available, so if you don't want to chuck your pumpkins, you can bowl with them. So, we will, that was a little late to get on the agenda.
And we're talking about, in conjunction with all of that day, also having the county day out there then, as well, to make sure that...
Yep.
...the county employees, as, as our kind of our fall event for employees out there.
Yep, so we're going to combine all of that, so, November eighteenth, it is a Sunday, and we'll kind of extend our hours that day, so we'll be, rain or shine, pumpkins will fly, which, by the way, I came up with that in my sleep at one AM and emailed it to myself, so I wouldn't forget. So, that's just the update from the OAC, any questions?
No questions, but a comment, people are talking about the free day, I, I think that is going to get us some traffic. They're, they're coming to me and going, "Is that, is that right?", and I guess, "Yes", that's what we're doing.
Yep, we had thirty-four new people to the facility on our first free day.
Yep, they're talking about it, and, and I think we're going to get more, so, and good job.
And out of that thirty-four, I will let you know, we converted five.
Good.
So.
Good.
That's...
Have them aim the pumpkins at the potholes.
Thank you.
Misty?
Good morning. I don't have much, I just have a couple things. I attended the district meeting in Stratford, South Dakota, yesterday, a lot of new information, a lot of information that, just to refresh everybody's memory of what the board's position is, what the supervisor's position is, that kind of thing, took it all in, ready to kind of put it all in place. The other thing that come out of the meeting yesterday is next year, in November, it's usually the first week in November, Brookings County will be hosting the district meeting at the BCOAC. Date yet to be determined, because we have a whole year, I was told, so I, I've got a couple dates registered, or held back, out there at the BCOAC for that meeting. Granted, it's not till this time next year, so, just thought I'd let you know that, and then also, I would like to attend, and I do not have a travel request in yet, but the Vandy Supply Meeting again this year, just, just to see what they've got, if they've got some chemicals we can use, you know, to see what's out there, maybe they have other ideas that we can, I can bring back and use, otherwise, that is all I have.
Any questions?
But the Vandy Supply Meeting is November twenty-seventh, so it'll be a day, a day thing, down in Sioux Falls.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Sheriff?
I don't think I can top pumpkin chucking. I'll have the city police run security out there. Anyway, good morning, I don't have a lot today, just a few things, the jail population is staying around that thirty, which, which helps us control things, twenty-four-seven continues to stay busy, we're doing more of the, more of the UAs than we are the drug patches, so I have sixty-nine individuals that come in twice a week to do their UAs, we have fifteen on SCRAM, twenty-three on PBTs for that, so that's forty-six that come in twice a day, so it still keeps us busy in the twenty-four-seven aspect. On the thirtieth, three deputies and myself went out to Basin Electric, which has their annual safety meeting, and got a tour of the facility, they've changed some things in their control room, and it's, it's good to get familiar with their emergency response, we are there with, along with the Brookings Fire Department, and they, even though they're not the primary response out there, they have the most equipment to help the other agencies if something did happen out there, but they got a lot of in, internal controls when it comes to emergencies out there, so they, they know what they're doing out there. We continue to have a lot of deer accidents, of course, with corn coming out of the fields and so forth, so we, so we're keeping, the guys are keeping busy with deer accidents. As Commissioner Krogman was talking about with the service dog, is that it's, it's certified in narcotics, it has made its first, it made its first drug arrest, but now it goes back to training to be a, I upgraded the dog, if that makes sense, it's, it's a, it's called a police service dog, so otherwise, it's also a search dog, so now it's, let's say that an individual, we're looking for someone inside a building or something like that, if someone runs into a building, and the dog will search that person out, and will bark at that person, almost like making apprehension without touching that person, of course, so, but it also on command would take hold of that person if, if necessary, so if someone's out there, runs from a car, it'll be able to, we had, I don't know, we had, in the last couple of years, we probably had three or four, either our, someone that we were looking for and had to call out search dogs out of, out of Watertown, or Watertown had an individual they were chasing on the interstate that ended up in Brookings County, which we, you know, so we'll be able to assist in those types of situations. This dog is smart, it's probably, of course, it's always going to be that our dog is the smartest, it's kind of like our child is the smartest, you know, but the dog that we purchased, which came out of the drug fund, yeah, is a smart dog, in its training, it'll be, it, it can distinguish in training a person's weight, so if you have a three-hundred-pound person leaves a certain track, and a hundred-and-twenty-pound person leaves a certain track, and it'll be able to distinguish if some, if you have multiple tracks out there, but you know which individual run from the car by the, it'll, it'll be able to distinguish which, which track to follow, it's, it's mind-boggling for me, but these dogs are so smart, just think what they do for pheasants, huh? Anyway, so, so, we're anxious, the thing is that it takes a while for the training, because it's extensive training, we work a lot with case law, South Dakota case law and, and different things, so. Another thing is that I had a conversation with East Central Behavioral Health, and it's always been, you know, since the county pays more than our share to East Central Behavioral Health, if I understand right, is that by statute, we only have to pay for a dollar for each population, right, so thirty-three thousand, thirty-three thousand dollars, but I think we give more than that, so it's always been the logic before is that they come in and they counsel and do, and there's not been any extra cost, however, there are situations where I'll have an inmate that needs to see the psychiatrist, or needs to go into their PA and get adjusted on their medication, that's an extra cost to East Central that they have to pay out, and so that's, they, it's going to be on a case-by-case person, that there might be an extra cost for an inmate that needs to go to see the psychiatrist. Now, it doesn't happen very often, but if that does happen, they're going to bill me separately for that, and, because they have to pay extra for that also, so, I don't think it's going to be a lot, but I said, "Well, you send me the bill and we'll figure out, figure it out from there", so, like I said, if they have to have the psychiatrist, or the PA adjusts an inmate's meds, there's an extra cost to that, for them, that they have to pay separately, is the way I understand it, so. Is that confusing?
No, but I'd like to make a comment, if, if this is a good time, I think before East Central makes that decision, somebody needs to come back and give us some numbers and estimate, so we could look at some budget figures, and this year, if my recollection is right, statute requires us to give East Central thirty-three thousand, and I think we gave them a hundred thousand, I'd like to know what we're talking about for extra charges. Mike, are you still the liaison with East Central?
Yeah, you were correct, that statute says thirty-three thousand, a dollar per population in the county, and we've gone above and beyond that, because that regulation is kind of a little bit outdated in relationship to costs of providing those services, and obviously, we want to continue to provide those, the psychiatric services are an additional billing to them, along with physician assistance to adjust medications, I think we'll, we'll work with, with the jail on those, as you say, there's probably not that many of them, our contribution to East Central for next year is a hundred and fifty thousand, there are other parts of that state law that says if you've gone beyond a certain population figure, that there could be additional funds expended or required to be spent, we're above that, I think we're doing a really good job here, however, we certainly want to be accountable for those additional expenses, so I think, if you could put some numbers to it, it will help us, especially next year...
Absolutely, yeah.
...in our budget process to look at that, that reimbursement, hopefully, they're getting things turned around there to the point where, maybe at some point, we won't have to contribute as much as we do now. Right now, it was a feeling that we needed to help East Central get back on their feet, help provide those services at the jail that they weren't able to provide before, before, at no cost, so, it's, it's kind of a round-robin right now, but yeah, I, I agree, we need to see some of those reports on the dollar amounts, rather than it won't cost much.
Yep.
What will it cost?
Yep, and I agree, and before, it's never been really an issue, you know, so I, they're just, I'm sure with their regrowth...
Well, there probably weren't requests for those types of services before, and so, you know, it's, it's new territory.
Yep, absolutely, so, anyway, I just wanted to kind of just to mention it, so that, that when I come back, so, we'll, we'll see how that goes. Like I say, it's going to be pretty limited, there was a, I have an inmate now that needs to have a shot every thirty days, and they were asking me, "Well, am I going to transport that person to the, to East Central to have this shot?" Well, I don't like to transport anymore, and I have to, because anytime you take anybody out of the facility, you got a more chance of problems, but I have two registered nurses, so there's no issue, there's no, you know, my registered nurses can, can initiate the shot, which they agreed, they didn't realize I had two on staff, so, I have two part-time nurses, so, when one is, is tied up at the hospital, I have another one that, that can come, so that, that's not an issue, so they don't have to leave the facility to, to have that shot, so. Also, I don't know if you, I mentioned a few weeks ago, I have a outstanding bill for an inmate at, at the penitentiary that we were holding for Colorado, and it was over a five-thousand-dollar bill to the hospital, which, which the, the county went ahead and we went ahead and paid that bill, I'm still trying to deal with Colorado, Colorado Corrections refuses to pay, but I did, we did get information that the person was on some type of medical, so now we're trying to deal with that, to see, it's kind of like Medicaid in a way, but Colorado's Medicaid, and so we're dealing with that to try to get that, that... And so we're dealing with that to try to get that, that, that money back for the county, and also. My next step will be, if that is, then I'm going to go and work with South Dakota Department of Corrections. South Dakota Department of Corrections says it's not their bill. They said it's Arizona. Arizona said it was South Dakota's bill. And so it's just been, but we're, we're still working on it to try to get that money, so. I'll keep you informed. Next week is the sheriff's conference and all the way over to Watertown. And so I'll be gone three days to that, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
We're going to come back to you after our regularly scheduled matter. At nine o'clock, we have a public hearing that, an action to approve Resolution 18-43, a resolution for consideration of supplemental budget. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Could you explain what this is, Stacy?
Last year, I believe, and Marty, correct, you can kind of correct me if I'm wrong. Marty received courthouse security grant dollars that didn't get expended in 2017. And we've been doing some projects, and we also have some projects that are in the hopper and hopefully done here by the end of the month over there with regards to some courthouse security things that we're doing. So this basically pulls that money that rolled into our fund balance from last year. Those grant dollars came in last year, rolled into fund balance, pulls those dollars out so that we can use those then to spend on these expenses now with the projects that we're doing over at the courthouse.
I'm going to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone here today to speak regarding the Resolution 18-43, a resolution for consideration of supplemental budget? There being no one here to speak on that issue, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have any comments from the commission? Then we will have a roll call vote.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Dick, you're up.
Good morning. Tomorrow, I found out, is the bid opening for the bridges on 77 South. And the anticipated start date for that will be in March. I also went with Kristen last week and looked at their parking lot to see if there's some immediate relief we can give her out there, and I think we came up with a seasonal solution. So hopefully, we'll get on that as soon as the weather clears up. And then we finished our shouldering on our overlay project on Highway 5. Painting of the roads is completed, and general mowing is complete. Some of the spot mowing is still going on for cat tails and different things like that. Warnock Construction is going full blast on their building roads and bases for the wind tower project. And there again, the weather has not been too friendly towards them either. Townships of Oakwood and Oslo have not turned in any invoices, so the one that's on the claims today from Windsor is the only one that I have received. I'll see if they come in in the near future. We've been getting ready for snow, and I know that's a four-letter word, but I had to bring it up. Also, part of that is getting our bridges ready too, because we want to make sure that they don't hold water, create ice. And also, there's a couple of items later on the agenda that will deal with highway things, but I think that's all I have unless you have some questions. I guess we were, we were interviewing this week too for a mechanic, so.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
How's the salt deliveries been? Coming in good?
They were good up until, you know, the trucks were scheduled for other places, but we're completely full. We're, we're in good shape now, so.
Any other questions for Dick?
The, on the bridges, start date in March, does that have 18 months after that to complete the bridges, or what's the completion date? Did they give them any incentive to?
I didn't look at the, the terms of it, but I would assume that would be correct.
Probably was no incentive to finish early?
I, I don't think so.
That would have been nice on Highway 77.
Right.
Kind of a.
We would have to come up with the incentive.
Oh, well, okay. Anyway, I, I'll read the bid.
Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We do have a couple things with the finance office before we move on to regular business. The one be-it-noted item, the trophy case from 4-H Department, it was declared surplus earlier this summer, July 3rd, and they've found a way to repurpose it, so we want to remove that from the surplus list, just a be-it-noted item. Also, Vicki emailed me right at the start of the meeting with some election numbers. As far as I know, I think it was a record turnout for absentee votes, 4,089. I asked Kristen, I said, "I think we're going to hit 4,000," and she's like, "I don't want to hit 4,000," and we did, we just went over 4,000. 578 of that was yesterday. That's how many people came in and voted yesterday absentee in the office. And as of about an hour ago, 8:15, so just an hour and 15 minutes after the polls opened, we had 100, 1,035 people that had voted countywide at that point already, over 1,000 people one hour into the day. And then one other thing, it's kind of more along my lines, but I want to do this now so that I can reach back out to Laura. The, the highway superintendent candidate that you have the one o'clock appointment for came down with the flu. They are still willing to come, not feeling well, or we could reschedule. What are your wishes? We would still have, there's a second one at two o'clock too, so. Do you want them to come while they're not feeling well, or do you, would you like to reschedule?
I don't want the flu. We, we could, we could put him after we canvass the votes on Thursday.
Could do that, or teleconferences may be an option. I don't know. Then you're not seeing anyone face-to-face necessarily. I don't know if that individual would have like Skype capabilities? Or do you want to see about Thursday?
I'd prefer to see about Thursday. I would hate to hire a department head that I'd never met.
Right, exactly. Yes, yes, yes. We would keep that one and then see about rescheduling at approximately nine on Thursday?
I'd be satisfied.
Okay.
Anything else? And just for the record, we're not having a finance department report today because of the election, so. Moving on to regular business, item number A. An action to approve Resolution 18-44, the Brookings County Commission's written determination concerning the current detention center expansion project pursuant to SDCL 1-19A-11-1, Subpart 1. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
And I see that we have a lot of people in the audience today, and I think people are probably here to speak on this issue. We're not actually holding a, a public hearing because on resolutions, we, we don't normally take testimony, but we would like to offer everybody an opportunity to come up and say what they want to say. I would appreciate it if everybody didn't say the same thing. So is there someone in the audience that would like to come up and, and address the resolution? We can, I could read the resolution if that's what you would like. Okay. Pardon me? Okay, certainly. Let, let me explain what's going on, and I can, I can do that for the commission. All right. We have previously passed a resolution to remodel our jail. We previously passed a bond issue to help finance that, and we've been saving money toward that process. Roughly, the jail remodel project was estimated to be at 10 million. That's, that's probably going to change because of our lapse in time. But we do have some money set aside for that, and, and we are collecting from property taxes for the purpose of remodeling the jail. We had a detention center remodel committee that met and came up with recommendations. We held three open houses so that the public would have an opportunity to look at the plans. We did one public hearing where people came in and, and put their comments on the record. And then we submitted pursuant to the City of Brookings Municipal Ordinance, to the City of Brookings Historic Preservation Commission, what our plans were, because we're so close to the courthouse. And our jail and our courthouse have always been located next to each other since the 1800s. Local historic preservation came back and, and said that the remodeled detention center would encroach upon the courthouse. We submitted, and they submitted their report to the State Historic Preservation Office. I'm going to call that SHIP-O from now on, so you know what I'm talking about. SHIP-O looked at the report. I'm going to let Commissioner Bartley maybe address what SHIP-O's response was, because he's got some additional materials on that. Then once SHIP-O came back, the entity that is the political subdivision on the project has to make a finding under SDCL 1-19A-11, or .1, has to make a finding that they have considered all feasible and prudent factors as relates to the project. The word feasible means possible. And I know that at our public hearings, we've had a lot of conversation about the possibility of locating the jail somewhere else. And that we don't think is possible, but that the issue is, maybe we could find a spot. But that's a two-part test that we have to look at. What is feasible or possible, and what is prudent? And prudent means what is practical, smart, common sense? Okay, that's what prudent means. And as the commission that looks at spending our tax dollars and looks at the safety of our citizens, we have determined, and these are the factors that we're looking at today, that it, we have considered everything that's feasible and prudent, and have made a determination that jail should be remodeled in its current location. And if the group sitting out there, we don't normally read resolutions, but if you would like for me to read the resolution out loud, if you haven't had a chance to see it, it was in the packet. There are six pages. But I, if, if there's, is there someone out there that would like me to read it? Because if you would, I will do so. Okay, and the, the record should show that nobody raised their hand to that, because it would not be fun to listen to me read six pages of material. But there are all the different factors that we considered in determining to leave the jail, where it's located, are set forth in there. And we are specifically making the written determination required by SDCL that we've considered all feasible and prudent alternatives, that we have determined that the location is where it should be, that we are taking our project, all possible planning to minimize the harm to the historic property, and that we're proceeding under that statute. And then maybe Commissioner Bartley, would you like to go ahead and add to that?
I certainly can. The local society submitted their report to the state SHIP-O, we'll call it SHIP-O, thank you, it's a little easier. And SHIP-O, once it gets that report, has a certain amount of time to, to respond to that report from the local committee. When that local report was done, or the vote was taken, I was, I was a little disappointed in the local committee's actions at that time. We didn't really get a chance to present our material from the architect. We had presented that material in a written format and a slide format to the committee so that they could look at it before we got there to, to, to answer questions or to, to present it to the public at that time. It was, comment was made that unless you have something new than what you submitted to us, that we won't take any other testimony. And it went rather quickly, and the resolution was constructed before the meeting, and I was a little disappointed in that. What happened after that is it took about six weeks before that final report got out to SHIP-O and state. What happened shortly after that, we were notified that, that it was finally submitted. And on a late Friday afternoon, I was made aware that, that SHIP-O wanted any rebuttal from the city to be there by Wednesday. Now, this is Friday at four o'clock. And that didn't really give us six weeks to try and do a rebuttal to the report, which disappointed me to, to agree that we, we requested and finally did receive an extension till Friday instead of Wednesday, and we put together our rebuttal, which is a lot of what you see in the resolution today. SHIP-O then came back with a report like three days later. It was pretty quick. And so having read their review, you know, they concurred with the local committee's findings, which did not surprise me a whole lot, except for they'd left a couple of caveats in there that I think is important for the public to understand. Their emphasis was on compatibility with massing size and scale. Not architectural features, but massing size and scale, site and environment. Again, site and environment has been a jail. Massing size and scale can be argued ad infinitum forever, because everybody has opinion on massing size and scale. But a couple of things that they said, I think were important to us as we look at it, as we make a decision whether to accept the report's final standings or to move forward is a statement I'll read. It says, "For a variety of reasons as outlined in their correspondence, the county has determined that constructing an expanded detention center at the current location is the preferred alternative. We appreciate the county's documentation regarding their efforts to identify alternatives to the proposal." That's an important statement. That basically states that the SHIP-O has recognized that we did indeed look at the alternative sites and found that nothing was, was acceptable to us as far as building a facility. Another statement that SHIP-O made that I thought was important was the final statement that they made. The SHIP-O would like to add one final note. In case the city decides to approve the project, the current landscaping at the Brookings County Courthouse, including several large trees, is an effective screen to minimize the visual impacts of the existing detention center parking lot and razor wire area. If the city approves the project, SHIP-O encourages the county to retain as many existing trees as is possible and to use additional landscaping as needed to minimize the additions' visual impacts on the Brookings County courthouse. As you look at our plans and our drawings, I think we've addressed that. The loss of green space is minimal, 360-some square feet. I think if you take the two wooden storage sheds off that property, which are not historic, by the way, and most people don't even notice they're there, but they're there. It's minimal, number of square feet of green space. As far as the trees are concerned, yes, there will be a couple that will have to be taken down. But if you look at our landscaping plans as presented at this point, it does include a boulevard with some trees. Those trees will grow up, and obviously will provide some visual relief to the north side of the building between that and the church. Massing and sizing, I think we've addressed that in our response, if you look at it. So those are things I think are important for us as a commission to look at and make a determination whether we accept the, the report or not in its entirety or parts of. I think we've addressed the majority of it. The only thing left, in, in my opinion, is mass and sizing. And as I stated, I think it becomes somewhat of an opinion on whether or not the building is too large for the site. We don't have an alternative site. And none has been proposed to us that, that has worked, and we've researched a lot of them. And we're, we're at a point where we won't go any farther with that, I don't believe. So those are the comments I had on the report that came back from SHIP-O. I was disappointed that we had very little time to respond. Happy that staff stepped up to the plate, got the materials ready, and we were able to get them out to appear in time. My comments.
Commissioner Krogman, would you like to say anything at this time? Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Jensen? Okay, then I would also, and I just want to say one more thing, and then I'll give you an opportunity. Then I would also, and I just want to say one more thing and then I'll give you an opportunity to do that, to say what you'd like to say. It's important that everybody understand that Historic Preservation does not make the decision. Historic Preservation makes a recommendation, has a review, and makes comments. And that's true whether we're talking about the local Historic Preservation or the State Historic Preservation Office. They do not make the decision. The governmental unit, the political subdivision of the state of South Dakota that's conducting the project, which in this case is the Brookings County Commission, makes the final decision. You can go ahead. And anybody coming up, would you please state your name for the record?
Do I need to hit the button or am I on? Okay. My name's Doug Carruthers, 705 Fourth Street. I just wanted to address a couple of Mr. Bartley's comments. With regard to the Historic Preservation Process, the meeting in which the findings were issued, that was the second reading, correct? You had presented to the commission, had the opportunity to speak to the commission on February 8th, or it's committee or commission, the historic, BHPC, on February 8th, and then their findings were issued in July. Is that correct?
I, I guess the commission won't answer questions. You go ahead and make your comments.
Okay. So it can be found, if you go online, that on February 8th, it was the first presentation of the, the county's plans for the jail. On July, the Brookings Historic Preservation Committee, after working with you and asking you questions and dealing with this process and processing the information that had been provided to them, came to findings. I think it's reasonable and prudent for a body that's charged with analyzing whether or not something meets the criteria that they are set up to protect, has time to evaluate the plans that are given to them. And as such, it makes sense that you would, at your second meeting, be given a decision based on what you have and be given an opportunity to present any new evidence that you had that could possibly sway that choice. At that meeting, you did not do that. So the, the materials and the timeline that the Historic Preservation were given is, in my mind, more than reasonable and is very consistent with how this board or committee would act if you had a large-scale project to, to analyze and then decide on. Second, I wanted to ask if you could repeat the section about who has the decision?
Who makes the decision?
From Mr. Bartley's readings of the findings from SHPO.
And, and just hold on a minute, Commissioner Bartley. I'm going to address that if you're, if you're okay with that. And I know that there is a faction in the city, okay, that thinks that the city makes that decision, all right?
Specifically, I would like that one section from SHPO read out loud one more time.
Okay. And they said city. It said city, okay? And, and we don't dispute that. And there is some conversation going back and forth right now between SHPO and the county regarding that issue. But what is very clear under South Dakota law, and I am going to cite so that everybody has an opportunity to know where the county commission is coming from, in 2003, Pennington County and Rapid City had a very, very similar dispute. Wasn't Historic Preservation, but it was the jail, okay? Very, very similar to what we've got here. And what the South Dakota Supreme Court said is, "County commissions in South Dakota are required by statute to establish and maintain county jails. When a county maintains and operates a county jail under the authority of SDCL 24-11-2 and SDCL 7-25-3, it acts in a governmental capacity. The erection and operation of a county jail is a governmental function necessary to the general administration of justice and particularly in the enforcement of criminal laws." And what the South Dakota Supreme Court said is that when a county is doing a necessary or essential governmental function, the county is not subject to municipal zoning ordinances, and the county makes the decision, okay? And that is, we're relying on the South Dakota Supreme Court's decision. And I think SHPO might have made a mistake when they said city in, in that report, but it does not matter. They make a review, they don't make a decision.
So based on that, why did the commission submit the Brookings Historic Preservation Commission if you already believe that you have the authority to move forward with the project without their approval? You have effectively wasted how many months' worth of time, money, and effort in order to find a, receive a finding from a city body that you don't believe has authority to make a choice for you?
Is the commission okay with me addressing that also? Okay. So Brookings, the City of Brookings and the County of Brookings work together on a lot of projects, including, for example, this building. And we do those things to make things work together, okay? For example, the county never needs to get for a governmental function, a building permit from the City of Brookings. We're not required to do that. SDSU is not required to do it because it's a governmental subdivision that's different than the city, all right? Contrary to SDSU, we always go in and fill out the paperwork for a building permit. I don't believe we're charged for that, but we give the city that information as a courtesy so that the city has in its records everything that we're doing as relates to building projects. We are not required to do that, but we do that as a courtesy so that we're getting along well with the city. The same thing with Historic Preservation. I myself found this process with Historic Preservation to be very difficult. I am a staunch supporter of Historic Preservation, okay? And I want to say that. And we came in because we wanted the input from Brookings County Historic Preservation. But what we were always told is, we don't give you any input except for to say, we don't want the jail there. Build it somewhere else. We don't want to give you input on how to make it better where it's at. That's truly an unfortunate way to go. And I myself did reach out to SHPO, and I had that conversation with the gentleman that runs SHPO, and he said, and I understand this, that local Historic Preservation Offices are put in a difficult position. They can't say, well, if you did this, we would maybe like it better, or if you did that, you know, because then that opens them up to one side or the other. Okay, I get that. I did not understand that before we went into the process. I thought if we worked with Historic Preservation, we would come out with a better project. That unfortunately is not the result of this process, which was miserable.
I think it's unfair, the categorization of Brookings Historic Preservation Commission and their process, and this idea that it was in any way opaque. If you read their minute notes on the first reading of this project, their first presentation of this project from BKV Group, it was clearly outlined every step that they will follow and what they're allowed to do. They also passed off all of the code that applies to what they actually do as part of their process. And so the idea that the commission here is in some way a victim of this opaque Brookings Historic Preservation Society is asinine. The idea that you didn't have time to write a rebuttal to the State Historic Preservation Society in six weeks after you predicted that they would support the findings of a nationally-recognized Historic Preservation Commission at the city level is asinine. You had six weeks where you knew what was being presented to the State Historic Preservation Office. You had time to define what you were going to, to, to argue against.
But, that's not correct. I'm going to let Mr. Commissioner Bartley say what he wants to say. But I want to, I want to make clear to everybody, it does not matter, and that should not be what we're discussing today. Because Brookings Historic Preservation does not make a decision.
No.
They make a review and they send it to SHPO, we're done with that. So that makes no difference in what we're doing today. They did their review and they were entitled to do that, and there's not, from my perspective, an issue with that. We maybe would have liked the process to work differently, but it did not. But that is not the purpose of our hearing today, and please, let's not get hung up on that issue. Let's deal with, with our resolution that we are working on today. Commissioner Bartley, did you, okay. So did you have anything else you'd like to say?
So yes, specifically speaking to Resolution 1844, the first five points are regarding proximity of services and, and other issues that surround the court and those that, that need to use the services of the jail. And I would just wanted to call to point out that Brookings, in its longest dimension, is about five miles across. And so the idea that access and proximity with the funding that you provide to Beta and the scale of our community generally is, to me, not very strong support. The ideas of massing and sizing are going to be subjective. The idea that investing $12 million to extend a building on a property that is, that has a historic structure that's being protected, is to me, one that is looking at a short-term solution to a very long-term problem. We know, as has been pointed out by Sheriff Stanwyck, that the courthouse itself will not always be able to meet the capacity of the, of the caseload for this community. As that time happens inevitably, the continued investment of taxpayer dollars in building structure around a historic building is going to get stranded or it's going to basically back the next commission into a corner where they are forced to move to the other side, take out that parking lot, build a full wraparound jail structure, because we are just embedding more and more money into this one property. Continuing to move forward with this plan isn't a choice to, isn't a choice to make the best choice for the community at large. It's a decision to solve a problem expediently, and I understand that there are operational concerns that are valid. I am not arguing that it is more dangerous to move a prisoner long distances. That makes perfect sense. I'm not an expert in, in holding people, I'm not an expert in running courts. I can say that it seems reasonable, prudent, and feasible to have a jail off-site that includes a court space. Those things can be done. They're admitted in this document that they can be done. The cost difference between them is not prohibitive. I think that if you had worked with the city themselves, you would find that there was a possibility that this could have been done in a more collaborative matter, or method, is similar to this structure that we're in today. I do believe that the commission has taken a short-sighted view in the, in the choice here. I appreciate that you have, have given us an opportunity to speak. I don't believe that we, as a group, have been properly listened to, and I also don't appreciate the miscategorization that anyone on this side of the fence believes that the jail, if moved off-site, that the existing structure disappears. I live across the street from the ugliest structure right now in Brookings, and it is a cinder block and concertina-wired jail. And I'm asking you not to take that down and not to replace it with a new structure because I think it's the wrong choice for this community. I think it's a stranded investment that is only going to dig this commission in onto this property and stop us from being able to move forward as a community with a collaborative judicial system that works on the state, city, and county level. And that is my opposition to this idea.
Thank you. We appreciate your opinion. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to step forward and say something? We'd like everybody not to repeat the same thing. That would be great. Would you state your name and your address when you be seated? Thank you.
My name is Mary Nixstedt. I'm from Volga, South Dakota, and a former commissioner. I, I don't envy you guys. It's hard to make all these decisions. So I sympathize with you in one way, but I'm extremely disappointed in other ways. And that is because I feel like you have chosen to take the easy way out. There are many reasons why it's convenient. However, when you say you're concerned about the historical preservation, we have one of the most beautiful courthouses in the, in the state. And I would like to see it look like a courthouse. And when I was here at one of the earlier meetings, I talked to the architect afterwards, and I said, "Well, what do you do if you need more space later?" He said, "Well, we'll just build on the south side." Well, I saw a rendering of what that looked like, and here sits this tiny little courthouse with great big, you know, boxy structure on either side. And you could just as well take the courthouse down and forget about the courthouse and just make it all a prison, because that's what it will look like. And so I guess I understand the, the convenience of having it where it has been, but when we put the new jail in in 1975, we took away the little red jail, which was the historical building. So it is no longer a historical spot for the jail, in my understanding. And so I do have a suggestion, and I feel like there is a spot in the city, centrally located, where there would be enough space to build a prison. And that is where the old WPA auditorium stands. Now, I know that building is basically condemned and it's not being used for anything anymore. And I think there's enough space there that we could have the jail, the East Central Mental Health would have easy access to helping people that are incarcerated. You're close to the city police department. We aren't that far from the courthouse here or the courthouse. And you could have a small hearing room built in where some, some things could be just taken care of at the jail. But if it's something that's more important, you could move them to the present system that we have, and, and that would then, you could use the big courtroom in, in the courthouse. And to me, I just think that it's, it's very unfortunate if you take away the significance of the old courthouse because it's a beautiful building. It has artworks that have been preserved and used, and it just seems unfortunate. And I would like to have you think about the old auditorium. Because I think it's a spot that you're going to, somebody, or the city probably, will have to do something for it. And, and there is another building that's very substantial there, and that's fine. That, you know, at some point, you know, that could be purchased and do another addition. And then you've got everything together and, and it's all up to date and everything is put together. So I would just like to mention that. I just, I just came to this thought this weekend, so that's why I'm bringing it now.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments and the service that you've provided to Brookings County in the past. Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Enjoyable. Thank you very much for listening.
You're welcome.
I'm Deb Deminiac, and I live at 627 Eighth Avenue and have lived in this old neighborhood for years. And first of all, I want to say thank you to all of you for all the work you've put into this. I always think, oh my gosh, you know, it's a ton of work. And I think I like to be respectful of all your work and, you know, you have all these brains up there working. However, I think that a few years ago, and it's kind of interesting that Mary Nixstedt is here, because she was on the, and the county had received the gift of the middle school to give to the county. And at that time, the county commissioners were like, we don't want that. It needs a $75,000 roof. We don't want that building. And a group of us thought, that's a beautiful building. It's part of this town square in the middle of our town. And we ended up getting petitions, and we'd come and talk to these commissioners, and they were just adamant that they were going to spend $500,000, a half a million, to tear it down and have a parking lot. it down and have a parking lot. And we're like, "Gosh, that just doesn't seem right. That building is a good building." And so, we took it, came to vote, and we had petitions, and I went to Bruce and Elkton all over the place and said, "You know, that's a good building." And on one of our petitions, the city engineer, and I can't think, his last name was Frolik, he came in and he said, "Deb, can I sign that petition for you?" And I said, "Absolutely. You want to sign it?" Because we didn't know who was for, who was against. He said, "I've told the county commissioners, that's the sturdiest building in Brookings County. There's nothing, it's sturdy." So, the end of that story is, we saved that building, and every time I walk by it downtown, I'm thinking, "That was a good idea. That could have been a big ugly parking lot," which now we're saying, "We're trying to squish this building on this property with not enough parking. We need variances." And I guess it's just my humble opinion that I think some, we're going to look back 20 years from now and go, "Who was the mayor? Who was around when this happened?" Because I do think this is the center of not just our neighborhood, of our town. You know, it's not, and I have friends that live over by Hy-Vee that say, "Absolutely." And I understand the being prudent and financial, but, you know, it would not need to match anything if it were built further out. And is it just a good long-term decision? I know all of you have put tons of thought and effort, and I appreciate that. I'm not negating that. But Ryan, one time at one of the meetings, you said, when we were talking about other locations, "Well, I need to know whose back door that's going to be in, where it's going to be." So, it's not only our neighborhood, it's the center of our community where people from all over the state drive up and drop their children at the children's museum. It's where people gather. It's beautiful. When you drive through Canby, Minnesota, they have a beautiful courthouse thing in the middle. And, you know, you drive through little towns that have saved them, and I have driven through one town, Missoula, Montana, who has this thing around the middle. It's not attractive. And I know, as commissioners, you're dealing with budgets and money. We're not all about aesthetics, but in South Dakota, can't we think about aesthetics sometimes? I mean, so that's just my position, and however it comes out, I appreciate your work, but I ask that you really consider that 20 years from now when one of your grandchildren says, "Whose idea was that?" You know, are you going to be proud of it? Or are you going to wonder? You know? And so, I guess I just ask your consideration for the center of our community, not our neighborhood, our community.
Thank you. Any other person that would like to come forward and speak out? Come on up.
Brian Rexx, 824 Ninth Street in Brookings.
And I'm going to have you just say that one more time in the microphone so the listening public will hear it.
Brian Rexx, 824 Ninth Street in Brookings. I first want to point out to everybody, mass and scale are not subjective. They are physical matter. They are, I'm a professor of architecture, okay? This idea that we can just, if there's limits just aesthetics and mass and scale can't, are subjective, that's physical space, and in other jurisdictions, there are zoning requirements on these issues that they can measure quantifiably. So, this idea, I realize the school of architecture is new here.
I'm going to interrupt you for a second, and I noticed you keep turning back. Folks back there can hear you if you're talking in the microphone, but if you turn back, the people watching it on TV, they cannot hear you.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Very good. I forgot I was on, I forgot I'm on TV. I'm kind of in the room.
Yep.
So, I hope you all reconsider this issue because, first of all, I don't think that this, the firm that you all contracted with in this regard, especially when I, I've shown my students the January meeting with you all and the architect as an example of a difficult client relationship. You all have had a difficult time with this. The feasibility for how this works should come from the architect. The architect should be able to show you all how this works. I don't think you've been served, for whatever reason, whether it's the capacity of the architect, the scope of their work that you all have contracted with them or that kind of thing for. It, something's been out of kilter since January because when I was alerted to that YouTube video, it's an amazing thing to watch that architect sit here and come close to expressing contempt for your process, as he did, the senior, the senior man at the firm. It's difficult that you haven't hired an architect who will deal with this situation and this place for their life, that you've gone outside of this place to do this. Civic projects in these communities, you need us. We can figure these things out for you all. You've gotten so far in this, I don't know how we can come back with this, but these issues that are raised, even mitigating the situation on the site, I think I could, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm ready to give you student work because I think we could do it, but I hope you all don't, I hope you all won't reduce what we do to just aesthetics and decoration. Mass and scale are real. The fact that we are going to raise the footprint of building structures on the site is about to go from 5%, the original was 5%. The current is about 10%. We're about to go to 20% of the total site cover. They call, they say that the parking lots and the sheds are part of the calculable milieu. This whole thing is a little bit crazy. We could talk about volume you're adding to the site. We're here. We're here to help you all. It's difficult to see this happening to this building. I used to live in the, I spent my first three years in Brookings across the street, looking at the same, sorry, looking at the same concertina wire. I agree wholeheartedly with the first speaker that I'd rather see this than what you're proposing. I just hope that when we do this project, we, one thing that I see a bright hope for is the way that this building is set up and the space between it and the original building is set up, I think it'll be fairly easy to tear down someday, which I hope is the outcome of this eventually. It's a beautiful, this town was not, this town was built as a real estate venture by the Chicago Northwestern Railroad, and when it was originally platted, there was no public space put into it because you couldn't sell it. This addition, this space over here was the second addition to the town. It was the first time that somebody finally said, "Maybe we should take this property offline and make it a civic space." It may not be that right now, as much as we could have, but I know in the past it has been. And I have one more question to ask that I'll ask rhetorically because I know you can't answer. Has, I'm going to find this out, has the county commission ever built a building in Brookings that it has not done that courtesy of gotten a building permit? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to make a comment? Okay, then I'm going to turn to the commission. I'll ask each of you if you have anything else that you would like to put on the record, and then we'll have our vote. Commissioner Jensen, is there anything else that you would like to say?
I guess a lot of work has went into this resolution, and I feel that in the best interest of the taxpayers of Brookings County that I support it.
Commissioner Miller?
I guess I would like to speak as to our architecture firm that we hired. One of the main reasons that we had to go away from this community to have an architectural firm is because of the expertise in jails. That's a little bit different than just a typical building. So, we interviewed, we sent out requests for proposals, and we interviewed architects, and we felt that this one met our needs. And so, it's not like we don't want to, and at the time that we interviewed them, we also asked that they use local contractors as much as they possibly could if and when the building procedures started. So, it was expertise in jails is the main reason that we hired this contractor, and so, that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Krogman?
Well, it's been a long process, and there's been a lot of input, and a lot of people have put a lot of time in it and everything, and, you know, we have to weigh all aspects of it financially and figure out what is prudent, and that's the question, what is prudent? And there's going to be different, you know, answers to all different opinions, to all different questions and where you should put it. And I guess, you know, there's the combination of talking about having a joint facility, and I would love to do that, but at this time, that is not an option for us right now. We have reached out to different entities, and they're not ready to go. So, we need to do something with our current jail. We need to have some expansion to that to be able to serve the people that have, you know, that are suffering from mental illness, to be able to separate them from felons and juveniles and stuff. We're lacking in that, and we need this expansion. And I suppose we could wait and hope that other entities would say, "Yeah, now we're ready." 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road, and that kind of stuff, but then we're still sitting here with the same problem. And so, you know, talked, we've reached out to different, we talked to our architect about a regional system. You know, you've got different entities and communities within the area are all adding to their building new jails or adding to new jails because of this, but in their experience, to be able to get five or six counties to come together and put a regional system together will take you a very, very long time for everybody to agree. The city is an option. It worked out for this building, but it's not going to work out for every situation. And so, in my opinion, we need to move forward with an expansion. We need to take care of our citizens, and when I add all up, all of the factors involved, for me, the prudent decision is to expand on the spot, and that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Bartley?
I'll go over the points I made earlier or respond or any rebuttals to the things, but I'll tell you, I got into this process after I got elected and got here. It was already started, and the committee was put together, and there was representation from not only the county commission, but from the judges and legal system and the sheriff's office, and I believe even somebody from the Historical Preservation Commission was on that board. So, you know, there was a committee that put a lot of work together. It was before my time. As I looked at some of the comments from the officials who run the jail and the officials who run the courthouse and the staff that work in those particular areas, one of the things I do as a county commissioner is I have to look at the safety and the efficiencies of all of our systems. I have to look at the cost-effectiveness of how we provide those services because they are services. They're services to the general public, not just to inmates. We often think of inmates as not having any rights or priorities, but the courts have proven in the past, if you don't have the facilities and the safety and the things in place, and all of a sudden, an inmate gets injured, it isn't taken care of properly or isn't separated from other individuals in the jail that may have a more severe crime than somebody's in there just because of a mental health hold and will be released 24 hours later. There have been lawsuits, and counties have been sued over not having, taking care of those inmates and their rights and their responsibilities. So, I looked at those types of issues too. The sheriff has explained that we have to separate some inmates, that we didn't have to separate 10 years ago, that we could all put in the same jail cell and hope they all got along, and unfortunately, we haven't had any incidences. But that doesn't mean that we won't have in the future because, as everybody knows, things change. We didn't have the opioid epidemic 10 years ago either that we have today. So, the jail and how it operates is changing. The people that are in charge of our court system stated pretty strongly that the efficiencies of handling those inmates and their families, and you have to remember that inmates have families, and families like to have their inmates treated properly and within reasonable accommodations, I guess. We don't want a country club, obviously, but at the same time, our jail is outdated. It doesn't meet code. If we were to build a new one and built it like that, it wouldn't meet code. There's not safety for our officers, not safety for the people that take, the jail people that work over there, not even safe in some cases for the mental health professionals come in there and provide services. So, we look at, up here, at least I do anyway, at the efficiencies of the system, and we take in all the other considerations as far as the location. We took into considerations of all alternatives that we could. I appreciate the offer from SDSU's architectural department to jump in, and in future projects, we're going to take you up on that. It's never been offered in the past, to my knowledge, and I know it's a new department, relatively new department, but at the same time, I'd love to involve you guys in anything that we do in the future, if you're willing to have a student project. But at the same time, this process has dragged on since I've been here for two years, and that's a long time, and there's been an awful lot of input. There's been an awful lot of designs. Do we have a problem with our architect? Yeah, probably because of the direction we set him off in the first place, which was to design the facility to work for us for handling our inmates and the efficiencies of the court services, rather than directing them to come to us with outside of the building design so we could look at it. One of the things when I was on the city council and we built this building with the county commission's participation was, the first thing we did was, what is the building going to look like, and how's it going to fit into this particular area of town, and taking out some properties that weren't necessarily historic, but we had some issues. One got moved over to Volga and preserved by a citizen of Brookings. It was a Mary Bibby, if I recall. Anyway, you know, those things were appreciated, but we also got the entire half a block to agree to sell their properties and build this building. And at that time, you know, we looked at other types of cooperative efforts. One would be a city-county law enforcement center. And the plan was, well, maybe we do this project because the city wasn't ready to move in a certain direction for a city. They needed, I think the county needed space first, and the city needed law enforcement. The decision was made by the city council at that time that we would move forward with the county and address the space needs because we had some at the city also. Well, then, the city decided that rather than look after this got established at that type of a joint center, which I was in favor of at the time, they decided to take the old city hall, move their police facilities into that facility and remodel it, and it met their needs. So, that kind of went away, and that sort of happens in government all the time where we try to look down the road, but everybody kind of says, "Well, you know, we need to move, and we can't wait." And there's a lot of validity in that. The city police department was going to wait another five years to improve their facilities, and they shouldn't have to, and we're in the same situation now. Yeah, I'd like to see a joint city-county enforcement and building right where we're at and add another seven million dollars to it. I don't think that's feasible. I'd like to see the county highway department, the city street department co-locate somewhere and have one salt pile somewhere. Those things don't necessarily work, and it's all a matter of timing in a lot of respects. So, I think a lot of effort went into this. I looked again at the efficiencies of the court system that we pay for and you citizens use, and how we deliver those services in a timely fashion to people who have people who are incarcerated or have to go to trial, have to go to jail. I think we have a very efficient system. I'd like to keep it efficient. I look at the safety for those, for the officers in the jail, and transportation is not safe, and our jail's not safe now. So, those are the things I took into consideration with this, and it just leads to the fact that we've done our due diligence. I think in a lot of respects, we probably should have had the architect design the outside of the building before he put the footprint together. We did that with this building, and then the city came in and designed their side, and we designed our side inside out after that. So, a little different process, but we straightened that out with the architects, and we sent them back at the request of the Historic Preservation Commission to give us more design options outside so we know what we're looking at. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. I'd just like to make one correction to what Commissioner Bartley said. That's okay. We did not have a Historic Preservation member on our detention center committee. We had a representative from the neighborhood that was on there, and I think that might have been what Commissioner Bartley was thinking about. It would not have been, I don't think, possible to have somebody from Historic Preservation on our detention center committee, but that's not the point here today. I would like to address two misconceptions that I've heard, and when I talk to people in the community, I discuss this with them, and one is the issue of having a joint county-city law enforcement center. I, along with some other commissioners, would have supported that, and two years ago, reached out to the city and asked about the possibility of doing that because now was the time if we were going to do that, and the city said no. So, that was the decision at that time by the city, and we have to move forward. So, that was the decision at that time by the city and we have to move forward on our project because of the problems with our jail that we've discussed at prior meetings and I don't think anybody disagrees, we've got some problems with our current jail. The other misconception and that I heard repeated here and I heard in one other meeting is that we're going to, Brookings County is going to outgrow our current courthouse. I don't know exactly what Sheriff Stanwick might have said that made people think that that was an issue, but it is not an issue. When I've had the pleasure as the last four years of serving on the county commission, because you all elected me to do that, of sitting on both the county comprehensive planning committee and the city comprehensive master planning committee and looked seriously, both of those groups, at population studies for the city of Brookings and for the county of Brookings and those, of course, those projections go out about 40 years, but there's nothing, nothing in any projections that are forthcoming that would look like we are going to outgrow our courthouse. I, I just, in my opinion, believe that's just not possible to have happen. And this jail will serve the needs of our community, in my opinion, through the rest of this century, if not longer. Not to say it won't need work. I don't think we'll be taking it down, but you know, it'll need maintenance, but, but it will meet our needs based on everything that I've learned working for you for the last four years. And then my last comment is when you look at resolution 18-44, you know, the, the important, the important thing for me is, is what's feasible and what's prudent, but it's that, really that prudent factor. And when I listen to what people had to say and, and listen to what the sheriff said and, and the detention center committee and I went to those open houses and I didn't go to the last historic preservation meeting because the first one was so adversarial and I'll just admit to you that I did not, but all of those, as I listen to people speak and I think about what's smart for our community and what's good for our court system and having served as a judge for 22 years, I can tell you, anything is possible because we as South Dakotans make things work. We can have a horrible situation and we figure out workarounds. I don't want to subject the next generation of Brookings County to have to pay for and figure out workarounds because we build our jail in the wrong location today. It is not a prudent decision to do that. And that is why I'm going to be supporting resolution 18-44 and we'll be voting to keep our jail where it's located. Did anybody else on the commission want to make any, any other comments? We'll do a roll call vote.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you and thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
We really do appreciate your input. Moving on, regular business. Item number B, action to approve agreement 18-97, a delinquent tax payment agreement in the amount of $4,639.72. Stacy, did you want to say anything on behalf of Vicki about this?
Um, does, I don't have any information. I don't think so. Her staff report is she's just recommending approval on this.
Any comments from the commission? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, action to approve agreement 18-98, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Second.
Anything from you, Dick, on this?
No, just the standard procedure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, action to approve agreement 18-99, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Second.
Anything, Dick?
No, just a road crossing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, action to approve agreement 18-100, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Thielen Farms.
Move approval.
Second.
Could you give us a little more information on this one, Dick?
This is down in an area, they've had another one in probably a quarter of a mile away and they're just trying to get another area of their property to meet up with the current one that's there. And so, they're crossing our road.
And this is just temporary or is this permanent?
No, this would be permanent.
This, this is non-perforated pipe, correct?
Uh, the crossing is, yes.
Yep, from right-of-way to right-of-way.
Yes.
Any further comments or questions from the commission? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item F, action to approve liquor license renewals for 2019 for the following businesses, Beach Bums Inc., Brookings County Club Inc.
Country Club.
Country Club, excuse me, Country Club Inc., Cousins LLC, Meadow Creek Golf Course, Skyview Junction LLC, Smolken's Pub and Grub LLC, Wagon Wheel Resort LLC.
Move approval.
Second. And Sheriff, did we have any issues with any of these entities?
No.
No violations?
No.
Okay. Any comments, questions from the commission? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The liquor licenses will be renewed, the motion passes. Item G, action to approve funding for Christmas Kids and Cops program.
Move approval.
Second.
What level of funding would you like to approve for the program?
I would like to move approval. At the same, the same level as we did last year.
For the past, I believe, three years, I think it was in my staff report that, um, yeah, for the past three years, we've, that we've done 500 for the program.
Okay. So, the motion is to approve $500?
Yes.
All in favor? Oh, no, we need a roll call vote on this.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a 4H support staff person.
Move approval.
Second.
I had a question, Stacy. The wage that was listed on that, is that the first step on the wage grade?
Yes, with these, there's just step one and step two for the part-time, non-exempt positions. So...
It says five.
Yeah, it's a wage grade five, but it's a, it's a, it's, yes, it only has steps one and two.
Gotcha.
On it because it's of the part-time position. It's similar to what we do with the part-time correctional officers around the same type of scale. So, once you get a, like if you're hired and then on your anniversary, you'd be subject to that step increase and then from then on, you're only eligible for the cost of living increases at the beginning of each year moving forward.
How does that salary, and I did not look at it, how does that starting salary compare with what we're having listed as administrative? We've talked about this for some administrative assistant type of positions. Are we, this looks higher to me?
It's the same wage, it's a similar wage grade, but this is only steps one and two.
Right, but it's the same hourly rate?
Yes, yes.
Okay. It is a good rate. That's why I was asking the question for entry level, okay? Anybody have any questions or concerns about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item I, approval of board appointments. Do we do each one of these individually? I think so.
Yes, I would do these each individually.
Okay. First of all, the planning and zoning commission, we have two positions for four-year terms and our two applicants are Darrell Kleinjohn for District One and Terrell Spence for District Three. Would we have a motion to approve?
So, move.
Second.
Richard, did you wish to say anything about that?
I guess as part of the motion, it should say Darrell Kleinjohn District One and Terrell Spence District Three are the appointees.
Yes, these are our current members that are currently sitting on the zoning board and they've done a good job in the past, so I recommend approval.
Any comments from the commission? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Housing re, housing and redevelopment commission, one position for a three-year term and our applicant is Ellie Vandenberg. Would we have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Vandenberg is also the incumbent. She was actually filling a term that had been vacated, so, and that term was going to be up at the end of this year, so she, she reapplied.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The Brookings Health System Board, one position for a three-year term. We have two applicants, James Morgan and Bonnie Specker.
Make a motion to appoint James Morgan.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm on that board there and we recently changed our, what was it, bylaw or what did we change?
It was actually the city's ordinance regarding that particular board.
Yep, and they, you know, asked for some input on that and I do sit on that board and Jim does a very good job. He was, he's there all the time and is an active participant in the board, has a lot of experience. He's a board regent also and, and certainly is in line to be the next president of the board, so I think it's only prudent for us to make that decision for Jim to be on that board. I do appreciate Bonnie Specker who also put her there. It's always nice to have options and stuff and appreciate people willing to serve on those boards. That Brookings Health Board's a very important board to our, over our county and city and stuff too, so.
Additional comment on Bonnie Specker's application was very complete and she's absolutely qualified for the position, but I think Mr. Morgan deserves a reappointment.
And I will say, I think, and as we reach out to her and tell her what happened, right, that we would encourage her to apply again because her qualifications were just excellent. But the fact that Jim Morgan will be the next president of the board is, makes a difference for me in my vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 4H Promotion and Expansion Committee, two positions, two, for two-year terms.
Move approval.
Okay, and we have Deborah Ford and Joel Foster.
Second.
Was Mr. Foster, I couldn't tell, is he already on there or is he a new person?
No, he's on there.
These are both incumbent applicants as well.
Any further conversation, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Extension Board, six, one-year terms, Andy Dupre, Deb Ford, Ronnie Parmley, Jennifer Pickard, Rhonda Stewart-Hauptman, Richard Waldner.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
These are all incumbents.
And I have, I just have a question. The one-year term for the extension board members, is that set by statute or is that our bylaws? What, what term is a one-year term?
That's set in statute.
Is that why we do this every year?
Yes.
Okay.
We've looked into that as to why we do that and there's...
They would like it if we did that.
There's a method to our madness.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Before we move on, it's part of that and maybe in my staff report for later, but we do, we did have two positions that did not receive applications, so I would, you know, what has been customary in the past is that we open that up and advertise again, which I'm asking for direction from the board to do that for about a week so that we can see if we can get some applicants in and get the jo, get the, those applicants approved at the next meeting on November 20th. One, one position was the Weed Board and that individual is actually already sent in his application, so we would accept that as, you know, moving forward if we advertise again, the incumbent did, he just didn't get it in on time this last time, but as is customary, we would advertise again. The other position is the First District Board and I believe we may be getting an applicant for that as well within the next week, so, but, but...
Re-advertise.
But re-advertise is what we typically do, so.
I, I had a, did we receive any applications on these other ones that were not...
No, everything that is, was in front of you is what we received. So, the only one that we received to for was the hospital board. So, yeah, no, if there were additional, you would have seen, would have seen them.
Item number J, action to declare items as surplus property to be transferred to another department or disposed of. Do we have a motion?
Do you want to do each new transfers or disposal?
We're, we're...
You can do both. Yeah.
I thought we could do them together.
Okay, that's fine. Move approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I would, because our questions took so long, like to table the item K, our work review plan and move that to our November 20th meeting. Would anyone have an objection to that?
I won't be here, but that's fine.
Just as long as I don't get in trouble because I'm supposed to bring that quarterly and we keep pushing that one off, so...
It'll be on your evaluation next year.
Perfect.
Commission, Department, Director Report, do you have something short because I'm worried about us running short of time for our executive session?
I don't have too much. A couple of things in front of you that I handed out. State's Attorney Nezville did share with me an email that she received regarding the JJRI fiscal incentive diversion program. So, we'll be getting 24 successful completers of that program, so just over $4,000. And then we have the Conservation District meeting, which is tomorrow at their, I think they moved it back. As far as I know, that's still at their office there on Sixth Street, so, in our CS conference office. The general fund surplus information, we discussed it at the last meeting, but the wrong information got into the packet, so I wanted you to be able to see those spreadsheets that I do each time. I did get everybody that wanted to on the board be, get registered for that pre-legislative luncheon coming up on November 19th. The doors open at 11:00. They're doing something a little bit different. Doors open at 11:00. At 11:30, they're going to honor Senator Larry Tiedemann and Representative Spencer Hawley for their years of service on the legislature as they are leaving those positions. The calendar, I, I think we could maybe push that off until next time if we don't want to get into that, but take a look at that. That was part of my report this time, the 2019, basically the meetings calendar. I want you to look at that to see if, if, how that will fit into your schedules for meeting dates for next year, looking way down the future, just not really a month from now. We did plan for Commissioner Miller's retirement party. That's going to be on the 18th of December. That's a Tuesday and it's a commission day. It's going to be here in this room from 2:00 to 4:00, again, Tuesday, December 18th. You can see the dates. I haven't heard back from her. She reached out to the individual who was the candidate who was ill to see if Thursday would work. I have not heard back from her yet, so, but do remember, you do have that special meeting to canvas the votes on Thursday, so in a couple of days from now. The only other thing is the Sioux Valley Commissioners Meeting on the 14th. Finally got the agenda today. I'll email that out when I get back downstairs to my office. It's at the United Methodist Church in DeSmet, I believe, so, but I'll email that out. We've been looking, I want to just double check that and if I can go back and find that. Well, I think, United Methodist, I think that's where it usually is, at the United Methodist Church in DeSmet.
Quick question, does that, you know, we've advertised for meetings starting at 1:00
come back at 2:00? So I don't know.
Can we amend that agenda?
Can we?
I had a flu shot, I'll just do it.
So...
We can amend that, so we need to, at least amend that agenda, so we can start at 2:00?
To start at 2:00.
Does that affect, I mean, I don't know if the public needs, if the public's going to be there.
I mean, it's just a meeting to go into executive session, is all. I mean, and then there wouldn't be any action taken at that, at that meeting, or any planned action at that time.
I understand.
Would you please just post a note on the door that says that the meeting's going to start at 2:00 instead of 1:00?
Yeah.
And then if somebody shows up and they have an interest, I don't expect anybody to show up, but let's post a note. And Commissioner Bartley and Commissioner Krogman just reminded me that that clock is an hour.
Yeah, I have that on my notes to have that fixed.
So that's why you only had 30 seconds to do your...
Oh, that's why I only had 30 seconds? Man, I could have talked forever today. So as long as I have more time, then, I, I hope you received your, my email from yesterday I sent out regarding my upcoming schedule for the next few days. I will very rarely be in the office until, like, next Thursday. I will be tomorrow and Thursday Mountain Pier for Safety and Loss Conference. Friday morning, I'll be in the office just for a little bit, get some timesheets done, and then I'm heading off to Minnesota to go celebrate my baby sister's wedding. Monday, we're closed. Tuesday, I'm at the Baldridge Workshop here, it's here in town, but it's from 8:30 to 4:30, so that's going to take up my entire day. And then Tuesday next week, what was, that's Tuesday, because Monday, Wednesday next week, I will be in the office in the morning, but then we have the Sioux Valley Commissioners Meeting over in DeSmet that afternoon. And then finally, on the 15th, I think I'm pretty much back for the most part, so. Just so you know, that if you're trying to get ahold of me, email, you can reach me on my cell or text or something, but I'll be mostly out the next week or so. Do you want to go over the calendar? Or do you want to wait?
Meeting in DeSmet, are we taking the county vehicle? Are we, do we have attendance already?
Marty, did your deputy end up taking the Traverse to pier for, or is he driving his own vehicle for? Going to take the Traverse.
We could drive ourselves, too. It doesn't matter to me, but who's all going to attend? I planned on attending.
Yes.
Ryan does, Larry.
Larry, Stephanie, Ryan, Mike, and myself, and Vicky, I believe.
We'll figure out a way to get there before then.
Yep.
We can drive a vehicle.
Did you want to look at the calendar for 2019 now, or do you want to?
We can do that.
Get into your reports? You are one person that doesn't get to comment on this. Okay. So typically, we meet the first and the third, and I was going to visit with Terry about this too. The first is the holiday, and with, do we need to schedule a special meeting on the second to do, to swear people in for, maybe you and I can converse about that, about, and look at statutes for, when people take office. But the first is the holiday, so it kind of, it would, the next meeting time would be the eighth. So we'll look at that. Maybe we, if we do something, we might need to do something on the second that day, because typically, we do meet the first Tuesday. It says first Tuesday in statute, but first Tuesday is a holiday this year, so there's kind of that caveat there, so.
I just had a question. Does it make a difference to you or to staff that both the three-day weekend in February and the one in January, we have a commission meeting the day after the Monday holiday? Does that matter?
It doesn't matter to us. We would have, we have the agenda done that usually, typically the Thursday before going into that weekend anyway, so just make sure that any prep is done on Friday, or I come in early, or on Tuesday to get stuff done. It's not...
Previously, we took that into consideration.
Yes, in the past, yeah, we've, we've worked around those holidays. Like I said, it really doesn't matter. It really doesn't give any, you know, but if the commission wants to do that, it's just that typically, the Monday holidays are always like the third Monday, and that's a typical meeting date, so it kind of throws the whole calendar off when we start adjusting for those, those holidays. But if you want to, that's fine, we can, but it doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter to me. I just wanted to know if it made a difference from...
It really doesn't, no.
Okay, so that looks okay to everybody? And we'll, we'll look at that issue about, I think it would be the eighth, that would be fine, but if the two of you take a look at that, that would be good. Should we go over the work plan?
Do you want to look over the work plan?
Leave that table for the 20th. Let's do it, okay.
The only one thing I want to say about the calendar, too, is if we're moving forward with this, that's, that's great. The one change to note is in December, we usually have three meetings in December, but just the way Christmas and Christmas Eve fall next year, we decided to push it off to the very last day, just instead, in having two meetings instead of adding that third, so. Okay, back to the work plan. It's kind of hard to see on this copy, but there's some things that I added in, in green are the new things, and now with the river bridges, we can add in that the bid opening is tomorrow, and that they'll start in March, so that's something that we can add to that piece of it. The public hearing for the five-year plan, that was done and approved on September 4th. We do need to have a discussion, and you can let me know when you want to do that, is, you know, as far as the township grant dollars go, we do have $100,000 budgeted in 2019 to discuss, you know, how you want to go, what process you want to use to award that money. You know, maybe it might be, my recommendation would maybe to get a couple of commissioners to sit down. We can review, although I wasn't in this position during that, I still have some documentation and what we, the process that we went through a number of years ago when we did something similar to this, it was sort of a grant application process. So we can, we sit down with a couple commissioners and look at that and decide and bring a recommendation maybe back to the full board, instead of sitting here trying to decide that.
Would there be a couple of volunteers to serve on a subcommittee to come up with the process for that grant program? Okay. Commissioners Krogman and Jensen.
Okay. Jail expansion, we can do some updating now with the approval of the resolution today. Joint Jurisdiction Committee, just some things that, you know, we're hopefully going to be looking at, draft ordinance here at the end of this month. The Mining Subcommittee, they've been drafting that portion of the ordinance as well. We did have a fairly lengthy discussion on wellhead protection areas at the last Joint Jurisdiction Meeting, so that continues to move forward. Mental Health Task Force, they continue to meet monthly. They did have the public survey that was distributed in September, and right now, they're analyzing those results. I don't know, Commissioner Bartley, if there's anything else to add to that at this point. BCOAC, Kristen has been updating you on the activities going on out there, as well as meetings and membership numbers. Not much new with Beta, union negotiations, we're still, Shiste Bog just stopped in last week and visited with us for a little bit, and again, what I would like to do is get him scheduled to come in in probably March or April, and get those taken care of in the spring, so that when budget time comes in May and June, we will know exactly what possible changes there may be, and, you know, budgetary issues that come up that we need to account for during that process, so. Nothing to add to the bike trail, the overpass ordinances, we're just plugging along, right? Yep. Otherwise, the self-evaluation, you know, we're working now through that Communities of Excellence Program. I did add that in, and like I had mentioned before, although it's not part of Communities of Excellence, the Baldridge 101 Workshop is next Tuesday, a week from today, and there's a number of us that are going to that. I think we ended up with five or six, six or seven maybe even of us that are some department heads that are going to be attending that workshop that day, so I'll be, like, be able to bring back some good information from that. Unless there's some changes, anything else that you see, anything you want added, deleted, changed? Tell me, I'm way out of line.
Thank you. Anything else from you?
No.
State's Attorney's Office Report?
Besides working on the ordinances with Richard and Bob and Commissioner Pierce, did participate and speak at the Take Back the Night Rally on the 24th of October. There was at least 200 kids. It was amazing. It was very exciting to see that, that many people come out for an event like that. Last night, I went to the Griffith Lecture on Stopping Sexual Violence and listened to survivors talk about their experiences and how they are making change, and so that was very good, because a lot of that pertains to a lot of the sexual assaults that we deal with in our office, being on the campus. Yesterday, we started our inaugural Crisis Intervention Training with Law Enforcement, and we had an all-day training. It went really well. We don't meet next week, but then we do meet the next four Fridays, or Mondays, I'm sorry, and then they'll get their badge if I deem them worthy, but no, they will get it. They're doing really well. But that's pretty exciting that we got that up and going, and we had a lot of great speakers yesterday, and talked about a lot of issues and questions that law enforcement have with, they're on the ground, so it was good to have those people come in and talk about it, so, and that's all she wrote, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Terry? All right. Commissioner Jensen?
On the 18th, I attended the E-911 meeting. They currently are, they were, that day, they were doing some testing for, I believe they were testing eight individuals to the interview for positions down there. They need to fill some positions. There was also talk of, I believe, I can't remember the number of towers, new cell towers that were coming into Brookings County, and some new phones that would be adaptable for the fire department, law enforcement, that would be kind of taking, taking place of your handheld radios. You'd be able to use your cellphone for those applications, so that was kind of interesting. It's something coming in the future, but, and then we, on the 30th, Department Head Reviews, and that went pretty well, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Miller?
On the 18th, I went to the Business Expo at SwifTeL. Our employees always do a nice job manning it and setting it up, and, and our booth looks good, and thank you for doing that. On the 22nd, I met with Commissioner Pierce and a constituent. On October 30th, we had Department Head Reviews, and on November 4th, I also met with Commissioner Pierce and a constituent.
All right. October 25th, at the Brookings Health Meeting, went well. Those meetings have cut down considerably in the amount of time that they take now, and so they get a lot of stuff done, a lot of stuff is prepared for us before we get there, so good, good meeting, get a lot of stuff done there. And then on the 30th, we had, you know, Department Head Reviews, and then during the week, last couple weeks, had multiple meetings with constituents and stuff concerning matters, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartley?
On the 25th, I attended the FOCUS event, held on by First Bank and Trust, which was well-attended and had very interesting speakers in that event. Also did the holiday parade with everybody, which was kind of fun. Steph and I got to drive the car, and the rest of you got to walk and pass out candy, but that was just fine. It worked really well. I still have candy floating around in the car that was dumped by people who couldn't get it in their bag, but that's fine. If I get stuck in a snowbank, I'll have refreshments in there for sustenance, so. And also, the Department of Reviews on the 30th, the reviews went well. I was pleased that all the department heads came in and were warmly received. That's my report.
Okay. On October 17th, I attended the BEDC Meeting. BEDC decided to take a neutral position as relates to IM-25, if I said the number right, the Tobacco Vocational Ed Initiative. And I just want to ask Commissioner Krogman this while I'm thinking at it, are you going to be at Communities of Excellence at this meeting tomorrow, or? Okay, great. Since I'm the alternative, I just like, alternate, I like to know. And then on October 18th, I attended the E-911 Meeting, and they're having a little shortage on staff right now because they have a baby boom, and so they're trying to, you know, fix that work around it, and it's, they're doing a good job. Attended the Expo out at SwifTeL, and again, our staff did a great job, and it was a good event, and I think it's good PR for the county anytime we can get out, and, and Bob Hill was there, I'm sure other people were too, but he was there when I was there, handing out all of that emergency information and stuff, both for adults and for kids. It's a good program for us. On October 24th, attended the meeting with, with the State's Attorney and Richard and Bob and Luke, and what we're working on right now is the CAFO ordinance, which is just really fun, and I think we're going to have our third meeting on reviewing the CAFO ordinance, so. And there are going to be some recommendations that'll come back that change, because this came from the AG Subcommittee, and they're recommending increasing the number of animal units that are allowed at different classes on the CAFO. So it'll, we'll see how that all flies when it goes back to planning and zoning, and then for our public hearings. Attended the FOCUS one at First Bank and Trust, and like Commissioner Bartley said, it was well-attended. It did make you think whether we're doing everything we can do to promote the county with our citizens. I had that thought. They, they, they just did some amazing things. They talked about different projects, not things that cost a lot of money, but things they were doing to put their name out in front of, of different groups, whatever their customer base was or whatever, and maybe sometime we need to just make sure that we're looking at what we can be doing, and I know we're doing our public service announcements, and we're handing out information, and we're doing all those things to get information out to our citizens on what services we provide, but maybe we could do more. That's what I came away from that. Attended their RAM Meeting on October 25th, and when Mike was talking, I already talked about my issues with, with that. And then worked with the Department Head Evaluations with all of you on October 30th, and that went, I thought, a lot better than it did last year, and thank you to Stacy and Laura and everybody for making that, that whole process be better. And that would be my report. And at this time, I would entertain... Yes?
In my Department Head Report, but on the 27th, we had the drug, the National Drug Back, or Take Back on Drugs, and we got approximately 160 pounds of unwanted medication, and it was all boxed up, and DEA sent me labels, and it went to Omaha to be incinerated. I just want to thank the local paper and, and the radio media, because they at last minute did, did some advertising for me. It was on the Health Systems webpage, but I hadn't gotten it in the paper, and they put it in, and, and so I think it was a success for the first time around, so.
And can I ask you, I had somebody that missed that deadline that asked me if they could take?
Absolutely.
Drugs down there another time?
Yep, I take them all the time.
You take them all the time?
Yep.
That's good to know.
Not personally. Absolutely.
Okay.
24/7.
Okay, great. That might be something we should do a public service announcement on. All right, thank you. Anybody else have anything to say? If not, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL-1-25-2, Subpart 1 Personnel, and SDCL-1-25-2, Subpart 3, Consulting with Legal Counsel Regarding Proposed or Pending Litigation.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll be in executive session.